Good evening. We're going to get started here. Thank you, thank you. So I'd like to call the order, the City of West Bend Licensing Board for October 18th at 6:25 PM. Note that we do have a quorum. We have three items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for September 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, say a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to other items for consideration. Number two, Reserve Class B Combination License for Good Day Brunch Cafe LLC. Good Day Brunch Cafe at 2400 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded. Any comments or questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then for number three, I'll be abstaining. Somebody has called me Butch like to take that item and then adjourn the meeting. Take it away.
Item three, Original Class A Combination Liquor License for Quick Trip Inc., Quick Trip Number 1058, 1280 East Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Being no further business before the License Board, I adjourn. Okay, I would like to call the order, the Board of Public Works. We have three items on the agenda. Item number one, Approval of the Minutes from October 4th, 2021.
Second.
Second. Any questions or additions? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Grant a Privilege Request for 256 Willow Lane. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is following a request for a grant of privilege from the owner at the property at 256 Willow Lane. Mr. Kurtz approached the Department of Development and proposed to install a fence in the right-of-way along the west side of Indiana Avenue in front of his property there to screen a bathroom window from the view of cars traveling on Indiana Avenue. After consideration by Engineering Department and Development and Department of Public Works, we would not recommend a fence in the right-of-way for that purpose. Mr. Kurtz decided to pursue requesting a grant of privilege anyway, so we're bringing this item to you for decision.
Okay, do we have any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, but I have questions.
Okay.
I meant to ask you this before the meeting, Mark, but did 96-foot fence, is there any way that could be smaller? I mean, is it, did you say the gentleman was going to be here tonight?
Yeah, I asked that the council allowed the property owner to make a statement. And I believe there's some residents of the area also that would like to make a statement.
Okay, all right. You want to step forward, please, and give me your name and address? Give us your name and address.
Michael Kurtz, General Partner of Bub Kurtz Properties LLC. My residence is 230 Willow Lane, which is three houses to the east of that property, I'm sorry, to the west of that property. The 96-foot fence is rather an arbitrary number. We have the setback. The property is 25 feet. From my building to the sidewalk is 25 feet. And then there's another between seven and 14 feet between the sidewalk and the road. So in this case, there's 40 feet of land that's away from the house, that's not being used. I'm not able to plant trees or anything there. I'm looking at installing a picket fence in my application. I pulled it again today. Said partly for the screening of the house and the window. I'd like to put up a six or eight-foot fence, but that's not possible. Four foot is what's being requested. But it's also for aesthetics. The building is very stark. 14 really poor quality box elder trees were on the property before we acquired it in May. And we've spent over $20,000 improvements. It used to be a drug house. And probably my business partner and I have close to 1,000 hours of repairs in there. We just had it reassessed and the value's gone up by $40,000. Many, many neighbors, I can't be outside painting any given night without people going by on Indiana and shouting at me, "Good job, looks great." So Max has the indication that it's really just for screening the bathroom window, which would be nice to have a higher fence, but four foot's what's allowed by ordinance, so that's what I'm requesting. But it's also the aesthetics because it's 40 feet from the house to the road. You get traffic going by. It's a very busy street. And also lights from the cars. So there's multiple reasons for having that fence, not just for screening. And I'm not looking at housing pit bull dogs or anything behind that fence. It's only going to be on one side of the property. Nor am I putting up a 70-foot silo that has four-foot-thick cement walls. It's a plastic no-dig fence, so could be removed probably in two hours. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Alderman, Talnik.
No, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
Well, Mr. Kurtz, I'm confused about the part about screening the bathroom because why would you need to have a fence to do that? All you can need are shades, drapes, or even an application of what looks like frosted glass over the windows. And with the elevation of Indiana Avenue, I don't even know how that would screen your bathroom, but can you explain that?
Well, first of all, it is a bathroom window. There is, the window is inside the shower. So Max asked me that question too, as far as putting a curtain in there. I don't know how that would work very well. It already does have frosted glass on the outside. And without getting too graphic with backlighting, it is easy to see a human form when the light is on in the bathroom. It's not ideal. The sidewalk elevation is probably almost 10 feet taller than the house. So yes, I would like a taller fence, but that's not possible at this time. Possibly even just the distraction of looking at the fence that'll have pretty flowers by it will distract some of the viewing of the house, per se.
Any other questions? Okay, okay, thank you. Max?
I wanted to add that if council, the Board of Public Works and council go ahead and approve this, we would like to have the fence a couple of feet away from the sidewalk instead of the six inches that are proposed there. I'm not sure where the gas line is. A lot of time they go behind the sidewalk. And in addition, if we need to remove sidewalk slabs, we would need a little room to work there, so I wouldn't ask for at least a couple of feet, which is usually what we have for right-of-way line.
Okay, Alderman Burke was.
Max, I'm actually looking at one of the pictures on the file that was given us. And are there any other residences along Indiana Avenue there that have similar fencing or shielding from the traffic?
Not that I could find, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman, Talnik.
I'm sympathetic to Mr. Kurtz. It's just that, I mean, I've got tons of residences in my district, I won't name where they are, but that have situations like this that they probably would love to do things within the city right-of-way, and I think that we have to be very careful about approving. I don't know how we approve this and then we say to someone else, "No," and it sets a really bad precedent.
Alderman, Allen.
Yeah, it seems to me that, you know, the the structure is effectively temporary. The homeowner says if there's a reason for the city to need that, that they're on the hook to take it out of there. I guess I'm sort of I have mixed feelings. I really don't see what what right of the city we're protecting here. I mean, it clearly is a case of Indiana was at one time envisioned to be what River Road has since become. You know, a major north-south arterial. But that's not likely to be the case.
I'll speak louder. So the issue with this is it's kind of like the similar discussion we have with liquor licenses. Like, oh, they're just going to get it for a gas station. Like, the grant of privilege doesn't say it has to be removable within two hours. It gives them the right to put a fence up. It could have cement posts, and yeah, it's at their expense, but that doesn't mean it's not a significant expense to, or a significant hassle to have that removed at that point. I mean, all grant of privilege documents from the city say that if we do work in the right-of-way, they have to remove it at their expense.
So, I mean, that language is in there, but there's no guarantees that they would have to put up the no-dig fence. They could put up a whatever they want. So as long as it's within the code.
And so regardless, the homeowner is on the hook to take it out if need be, correct?
Correct. That doesn't mean it's easy to make that happen.
Homeowner gets due process?
Well, it doesn't mean that. I'll point you to another situation, right? It's different, but there was when we were painting our water tower a few years ago and Verizon had to remove their stuff, and we spent hours and hours and hours trying to track Verizon down to do it until we finally gave them an ultimatum to remove it or we were going to do it. You know, and it finally happened. So I mean, and it doesn't even necessarily apply to this homeowner. Sure, maybe this person's responsive, but the next person may not be. And now it's the city's expense to remove it and try and collect that money. So I will say that we do, like Max said, we do have to be careful, or Alderman Dolnick said, we do have to be careful where we grant these because if we have these fences in the right-of-way all over the place, it can create significant issues.
In most cases, it seems that the right-of-way that we're protecting is the terrace. It's the sidewalk and the terrace. This is a unique case where we have, or I don't know, maybe it's not unique, maybe we have them just everywhere. Where the city has, you know, land into, you know, effectively, you know, in this case, what, 40-some feet inside of the sidewalk. On the assumption that at some point we may need to expand the size of Indiana Avenue, correct?
I mean, I would say the situation is not necessarily unique. Like Alderman Dolnick said, there's a lot of people he could point to in his district who have similar issues with the right-of-way and side yards and everything like that. So I would not call this property unique.
Okay. I just, when I went looking, I couldn't find a lot of places where the city, the city property line, or the city property, you know, was inside of the sidewalk by any reasonable amount, other than along Indiana. So, I mean, there may be others, but I'm just not aware of them.
Indiana north of Washington.
Hmm?
Indiana north of Washington. If you look, there's, it used to be owned by Mrs. Nickel on the corner of Wilson in Indiana. It's a huge portion of city right-of-way. Just like this, because it was going to go north.
Right.
And I've got all of the north, I'm sorry, all of Vine Street extended behind houses on Hargrove. That city right-of-way is not supposed to be touched.
Max, the neighbors, are they aware of the fence that's being placed?
We have not contacted the neighbors, but I don't know if the property owner has. One neighbor called me about this, so he was aware of that. But that's all I've heard. But I assume the property owner, he owns other properties in that area. I'm sure he talked to his neighbors.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other questions?
I believe there were some other people that wanted to speak to this.
Yep, okay, why don't you step forward? State your name and address.
Kenny Aslan, 210 Willow Lane. So Mike is a neighbor two doors down. He owns Duplex just to the west of me as well. He's been a great neighbor, a great landlord of the property that he owns, of the properties that he owns. So the neighborhood is kind of going through a renaissance where a lot of new owners and a lot of people doing upgrades to their homes. I honestly think that this fence would actually improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And while I understand the right-of-way, I would think that should the city have to do something where the fence has to come down. Both Mike and Gary are very responsible owners that would be able to take that fence down in a very short period of time. Again, he's living in the neighborhood, only a couple of doors down. So I think that he would be easily contacted should that, should you make that exception and should something happen where he has to take it down. So again, I think it would improve if he does, did something similar to what I've got, so a white picket vinyl fence, no-dig fence, easy up, easy down. Shouldn't cost hardly anything to take it down once it would need to come down should something happen with Indiana Avenue. So I would hope that you would vote for this measure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right.
I do have a question for Max. Can I?
You can ask, and then I'll.
I got to see Max before I can ask this question. Max, maybe, maybe the answer, and I'm not saying that one solution would be to abandon that extra right-of-way. Do you, is there any way that Indiana Avenue would ever be widened, that we are going to need this?
I don't know. Obviously, it was planned at some point. And it hasn't been implemented. That doesn't mean that it won't be needed at some point. That section of Indiana, we brought back into the heavy-traffic route when we switched from Veterans to that section of Indiana. And so based on that, it's possible that it would be widened at some point.
Alderman, Allen.
I actually have a question for the homeowner. Is the moving the fence, what, two to three feet inside of the sidewalk? Is that what you're looking for, Max?
Yes.
So two foot would be enough, or do you?
Yes, his proposal right now is six inches.
Correct.
We would like that to be wider.
Well, two foot?
That's what I said.
Would two foot be acceptable as far as moving the fence two foot inside of the sidewalk?
Absolutely. And just for Alderman Dolnick, I had requested permission to buy that, to have the city vacate that property and was told, no, that wasn't possible. One other thing to add, if you're going to create a four-lane road right off of Washington Street, you would think common sense would say that you really have to do something on the south end of Indiana where it's about the width of a wagon train track. And that clearly would be difficult with the houses as close as they are, so I don't think that road will ever be four lanes.
Municipalities are notoriously hesitant to vacate right-of-way.
All right, any other questions? All right. We have a motion on the floor, but with that motion, I would like to add that the setback of the sidewalk would be at two feet versus six inches.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, John. From the photographs that we had, it kind of looked like there was that kind of setback, so I totally agree with that.
All right. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, can we have a real call?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Burkequist?
No.
Alderman Kaler? Sorry, he's absent. Alderman Dolik? Alderman Aaronz? Alderman Model?
Aye.
Motion carries four-two.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. All right, item number three, Permission to Bid Contract 21-14 Tree Surety 2022. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting permission to advertise for the annual street tree planting contract. The contract number is 2114 Tree Surety. In an effort to get better pricing, we would like to bid that, this contract out now for a spring 2022 planting. Normally, if we can get the contract out ahead of time, it's easier for the contractors to locate the trees we are requesting, the quantities, et cetera, et cetera. And hopefully, we can get some better pricing so they can get it on their books early in the year. The contract is written as a base bid, which will include the planting of 246 trees. And it will provide for, in that base bid, it will provide for 12 weeks of irrigation. We will also get quotes from the contractor for hand-digging around utilities and additional irrigation cycles if we have a dry summer, a dry portion of the summer. The preliminary estimate for the project or the contract is $70,040. This includes a 3% contingency. We have several funding sources for this project. Approximately $32,334 will be used in the tree surety account. Again, this account is set up for tree plantings and new residential developments. That is part of the developer's agreement when those go in. Additional funding sources include capital funding of $25,000 to plant free street trees as part of the Emerald Ashport Response Plan. And remaining funding will be a combination of 2021 carryover funds, donations, money or revenues from firewood sales. And we have also applied for an urban forestry grant that will hopefully offset some of the costs for this project. And we'll be happy to take questions.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all right. Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, Mike, are we done taking, taking trees down at this point?
For Emerald Ashport, we are done taking them down. We are just in the process of replacement.
That's what I thought, okay.
All the street, I think we literally have one ash street tree left out there. We're doing some rural right-of-way clearing and cutbacks and things like that. We're just in the process, we're caught up with all the tree removals, the stump removals. We're just in the planting process, replacement process. Residents really like the free street tree program.
How far along on the stump removals?
We're done.
Done with that, too?
Yeah, with all the ash, I mean, every annually, we have stump removals.
Sure, 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 sure.
We remove them spring, fall, et cetera, but I'm happy to announce EAB for West Bend is over.
Nice.
So that headache and process is done.
Awesome.
Alderman, Allen.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was going to say, there's other reasons the trees come down because I had two maples, three maples at my house that over time, they suicided. They basically got root bound and.
Gardening roots slows growth down, plant eyes from the inside out. Yes, that's very common.
So I was going to say, it's not just Emerald Ashport that causes us to lose and need to replace street trees.
Annually, we remove, we can remove anywhere from 100 to 300 trees annually for multiple different scenarios. Future role construction, Seventh Avenue is a good example. We go through, remove any unwanted trees, things that might not survive construction, et cetera. Trees die naturally. It's an urban environment. These trees aren't, will not live forever, things like that, so, yes.
All right. Can you, can you find trees that don't have leaves that fall that I have to rig?
We would have to put in plastic palm trees, I guess.
Really?
I'll put it, we can add that to the approved street tree list if you like.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn. I would like to call to order the Finance Committee. We have six items on the agenda. Item number one, Approval of the Minutes from October 4th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Presentation by LRS regarding the.
Mr. Chairman, is there going to be a set of meeting minutes from the meeting on the 11th?
Yes, there will be, but the agenda went out before they were complete.
All right, thank you.
All right. Item number two, Presentation by LRS Regarding the Issuance and Sale of $2,860,000 Taxable General Obligation Community Development Bonds Series 2021B. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening. Phil Costin with LRS. Nice to be back with you. I have a packet that was handed out, a hard copy as well as what you see on the screen in front of you. Maybe a little bit how we got here before I jump into the results of today. John Cameron from our office was here a month ago. And at that point, he provided you with some detail behind this issue. This affects TIDS 12, 14, and 15. And in each case, there's a contractual obligation by the city to undertake certain expenditures related to different development agreements for those three tax increment districts. So this is really fulfilling the city's requirements per those development agreements that have been put in place. Before I jump into the results, we do spend quite a bit of time modeling out the cash flows for each of the tax increment districts to make sure that the structure that we are proposing for the debt fits within the anticipated revenues of the tax increment districts. What we really want to make sure is that we have enough revenue to pay the debt service and we don't have to dip into levy or advanced funds to be able to pick up the extra costs to meet the debt service payment. So we've taken quite a bit of time to go through that cash flow analysis with city staff as well. So since the authorization last month, we had a couple of things that took place. One, we had a rating call with S&amp;P. The city is rated by S&amp;P, so they rate the new issue and all the outstanding debt that the city has. And in the back of the packet is the rating report. And I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to give you the highlights real quick. So they've affirmed the city's AA rating, which is a very strong rating, and identified it as a stable outlook, meaning they don't see pressures that are negative pressures that could lead to a downgrade anytime soon. They identify, as they have historically, a couple of real strengths of the city, and I'll just point those out real quick. And then I'll talk about what could move the rating up or down in the future. Strong economy with broad and diverse metropolitan statistical area. Strong management with good financial policies and practices. Adequate budgetary performance, meaning general fund, you know, revenues versus expenditures on a yearly basis. Are you able to add to the fund balance, and you've typically done that. Flexibility, budgetary flexibility under levy limits. The city does not take the full allowed levy. You have plenty of adjustments you could take, so they view that as having flexibility in the future. They also identify strong liquidity as it pertains to fund balance. They talk a little bit about your debt and saying it's adequate when they compare it to other similar AA-rated communities. And then strong institutional framework as well. So those are a lot of positives. Really, if you look at the report, there aren't many negatives or any negatives really to report. They do provide on the second page of the rating what it would take to move the rating up and down. To bump it up, it really becomes more of a tax base issue, growing the tax base, increasing some of the wealth indices, kind of the wealth of the community and fund balance. Those are the three things that they would point to, to be able to move the needle. And conversely, if you deteriorate fund balance, you see a shrinking economy, lose a number of large taxpayers, those kind of things could lead to a downgrade. So great news from S&amp;P. And it probably is more of a verification of what you already know as far as how the city is operated. So that took place. I want to thank city staff for participating on that. They do spend quite a bit of time preparing for that. And then also, we prepared what's called an official statement. A lot of that information comes from city staff. It's what we use and then send out to potential bidders on the bonds. And we took bids today at 11 o'clock. So the first page in on the packet that you have in front of you, which is the sale results that you see on the screen as well, gives you kind of a snapshot of what occurred today. So we received four bids. This is again a taxable issue, not a tax-exempt issue. We tend to see a little more narrow scope of, or number of bidders that would bid on a taxable issue. The reason it's taxable, and I forgot to mention that early on, is because of those development agreements. They're great. They have their protection for the city. But when you have clauses in agreements that call for shortfall payments or things like that, that triggers what's called private activity. Direct connection between a local unit of government and a private developer. And so that's what makes the bonds taxable as opposed to tax exempt. The low bid received from Northland Securities out of Minneapolis was 2.1623%. The high bid was 2.3318%. And some of the costs came in a little bit less, so as we. So as we structure the debt, we end up with a couple of items where they will actually bid, not just interest rate, but also they will bid on like a, what's called a discount, which is like a point on a mortgage. That came in less, and as a result of that, we're able to reduce the size of the issue by 25,000. So what you have on your agenda tonight is the 2,860,000, and the final resolution that we're gonna ask you to approve tonight is $2,835,000. So we reduced the issue size by that 25,000. We had a situation where this is what's called term bonds. They group up maturities, meaning you have what are called term bonds. So if you go to page two of the packet, you'll see the bid tabulation. Northland Securities, again, you'll see is the winning bidder at 2.1623%, so for an 18-year taxable financing, 2.1623%. BOK Financial Securities at 2.2633%, and then the other two bidders that were received were Piper Sandler out of Chicago and Baird out of Milwaukee at 228.99 and 233.18. So pretty close bidding. Any, the higher the rated community, the closer you see the bids that are received typically, just because the margins get squeezed a little bit because of the rating being so high. So as I indicated, we ended up with the ability to shrink the issue by $25,000 because some of the costs came in less. And we have a breakdown here of the total issue, which you can see on page number six of your handout. In that, you'll see what we had proposed and estimated for interest rates versus actual. We ended up 40,213,000 less in total principal and interest. Again, that's for TID 12, 14, and 15. It's broken up between, between the three tax increment districts. And then we do have a breakout on pages, pages six, I guess it is, in the packet, for each of the TIF districts, 12, and then 14 on page seven, and TID number 15 on page number eight. So as you can see, TID 15 has a, for instance, does not have a principal payment in 22 or 23 because it's a brand-new district. They're gonna start developing that in 21 and 22. You're gonna receive revenue in that district for the first time in 2024. So we have structured this so that we're first maturing principal in 24, and we've capitalized the interest payments in 22 and 23 so that there's no budgetary impact due to that tax increment district. That was all spelled out in the development agreement and what they expected to be put in place. Finally, we have a, a one-year bond chart after the rating that has been included in the packet as well. That bond chart shows a little bit of a bump up that we're seeing. If I showed you a 20-year, 15, 10, five-year chart, it would look like we are at the historic lows in the bond market. This is just kind of the last year, and you can see it's bouncing around a little bit. It's bouncing around a little bit, and we think the biggest driver over the last month of this has really been inflation. We're seeing inflation in the, in the country, and we're starting to see that affect interest rates and the municipal interest rate side a little bit. So again, great rates. If you look at it historically, wonderful rates, a little over 2% for 18 years on a taxable basis, stuff I never thought I'd see many years ago. So don't let this chart dissuade you from thinking you did very well today. So that's a summary. Again, it's really contractual for 12, 14, and 15 TID districts, and making sure you're meeting your end of the, of the agreement to get these projects done.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Phil? All right, we have no questions. Thank you very much, Phil.
Thank you.
All right, we go to item number three, resolution for Wisconsin Department of Administration Neighborhood Investment Fund Grant. Good evening, Jess.
Good evening. I'm here if you have any questions on this grant opportunity.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Jess? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, resolution for Wisconsin Department of Administration Tourism Capital Grant Program. Jess, any motion on the floor?
No approve. Second.
Any questions for Jess?
Thank you.
We have Alderman, Model, and Alderman, Delnick. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution authorizing the transfer of general fund balance for purchase of aerial lift truck. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening again. Excuse me. This evening, our department is requesting permission to purchase a 2021 65-foot aerial lift truck or bucket truck for $163,099 from Lakeside International. Our department is also requesting that we sell our current bucket truck, which is a 1993, it's a 55-foot aerial lift truck, a 55-foot bucket truck. We'd like to sell that at auction. We're hoping to get an auction sale price of around $15,000 for our existing buck, our current bucket truck. We are also in the process of replacing our 1997 Forestry Chipper Truck, and as soon as we get our new truck, and we'll be, also be selling that vehicle at auction, we are hoping to get 15 to 20,000 for that, for the sale of that truck also. We are very, if you're in the market to sell used vehicles, this would be the year to do it because many companies can't find the new, the new vehicles out there. They're just not available. Safety for our staff, life-to-date repairs of our current bucket truck exceed $49,000. Continued downtime for repairs, the vehicle age and the current mileage have prompted the replacement of this vehicle. This vehicle is utilized for a wide variety of priorities, including general forestry work, tree removals, storm response, maintaining athletic field lights, walk and parking lot lights, traffic cameras for public works. We go out when they need assistance adjusting or installing or replacing cameras, excuse me, and also we use this vehicle for general building maintenance repairs, getting up on rooftops, doing electrical work, things like that. The history of the replacement of this vehicle and using general fund balance funding goes back several years. At one point in time, our department requested replacement of our existing vehicle. At that point in time, we were asking for capital funds to be used. At that time, we were working with a different international truck dealership. The Lakeside International Truck Dealership is literally within, the one we're working with now, within like 10 minutes of where I'm standing. We do a tremendous amount of work with Lakeside International. They've always done a tremendous amount of great work for us, warranty, general maintenance, things like that. Also, our public works department, 2:00 in the morning needing plowing parts and all that, so. So we did switch from one vendor to our current vendor. When we did that, our current vendor was able to locate a, I'll say, a more general vehicle. It would be a flatbed chassis with the 65-foot boom on it, one storage compartment, that's it. So the original vehicle several years ago of 225,000, it had more storage compartments on it, more bells and whistles, et cetera, et cetera. Take all of that off of this new vehicle, and we're gonna get more of a general vehicle. If we are given permission this evening to purchase it, we would give our staff the green light to use some operational funds to add some storage compartments and things like that once we get this vehicle. So we can save funding that way of, instead of having the dealership do some of that work for us, we can do it ourselves. Actually, I think it'd be a pretty cool project for our staff to kind of set this truck up specifically for our needs, especially the forestry work, our power printers, our certain length, and some of our chainsaws and things like that. So it's not that we're getting any cheaper, the price is a little bit cheaper, we're just getting less storage compartments, things like that. This truck would be applicable to our needs for today and several decades out into the future. So we're not buying a truck that we can do less with, we can actually probably do more with this truck. The extra 10 feet of reach, I can tell you, for a guy that's vertically challenged like myself, to work on ball-diamond lights at 55 foot, I'm standing on my tippy toes to get some of that work done. The 65-foot lift would be definitely beneficial, especially when you're up that high and you're on your tippy toes in that bucket trying to get some work done. So again, this, our replay, our existing truck is a 1993. We've had issues with it. The last issue we had was mid to late, early, late summer, and that was a $7,800 replacement. It was a transmission issue. It's just the repairs are becoming bigger and more costly. I hate to see our equipment loaded up behind tow trucks and hauled off our yard or off the street. We're not getting work done when we're doing things like that, spending a lot of money unnecessarily. So I thank you for your time and consideration on this topic this evening. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Mike?
Do you mind if I jump in, John?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you. I'm sure some of us remember, a few years ago, we, this is a pretty heavy, maybe a little controversial topic, and you know, we were looking at a quarter of a million dollars that we were, we were budgeting, so just to see that over $60,000 savings and that by being patient, we were able to find a vehicle that even suits our needs even more is pretty exciting. So I just wanted to thank you and your patience and staff's patience as we've gone through this process, so, good stuff.
Thank you. Alderman, Model.
I think it's great that we're finally doing this. I mean, you guys have been taking their lives, their own hands going up in this, going up in this old one. I'll be happy to see you guys be a little more safer out there.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? This is a brand-new truck, right?
This is brand, it's a 2021.
2021, but it's brand-new. Okay. All right, we have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number six, accept grant funding from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Yeah, before you, a resolution to accept the grant from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. You see those advertised on TV for the Firehouse Subs. Mark, one of our talented grant writers, and Battalion Chief Gustafson, and Captain Kenny Asland wrote a grant, and we were successful to receive $15,107 that we're using to purchase thermal imaging cameras. We were purchasing two of them with that. Usually, we get the thermal imaging cameras when we buy new trucks. Unfortunately, the trucks last 20 years, cameras last about 10. So we were fortunate enough to get two of those, plus a thermal imaging monocle, which is, can see about a mile and a half out. And what these do is they, they sense heat signatures in a building. So if you have a building full of smoke and heat, we'll be able to see a fire behind walls, we'll be able to see trapped occupants. We've been using them now for probably about 27 years, and they're a phenomenal piece of equipment that we have in the toolbox. So we thank Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, and we ask you that you accept this resolution tonight.
Motion to approve and thank Firehouse Subs.
Second.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, and thanks for your, fellows for putting up, putting that grant together and getting that, that, thanks a lot. Appreciate that.
Yeah, those guys do a phenomenal job with that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So if you're looking to go to lunch somewhere, and you go there, tell them thanks.
Being no further business, before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
And good evening once again. Like to call over to the City West Bend Common Council Meeting for October 18th. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman, Kaler, and Kennedy absent and excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll note that we have 18 items on our agenda, with the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for October 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, sort of by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll move on to presentations. Presentation by Ellers regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. To give a little back, background, I saw a similar presentation in regards to the ARPA funds at last league conference I attended. I thought that was pretty neat and exciting, so I asked Phil here to, to come and tell us a little bit more about the program, because it's not every day that the federal government drops, you know, millions of dollars into our lap. So take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I jump into this, one quick clarification. I realized when I was talking about the rating call before, that there wasn't a call for once. Normally, it's always a rating call. This time, because we had issued debt not too long ago, it was, it was a memo, they sent out a list of questions that was responded to by a collective group that sent over, so I'm just used to saying rating call, I guess, because I do so many of them. So I'll start by, real quickly here, I know the presentation looks long, I'm gonna get through this pretty quick. The, this is an ongoing process, and there's continual guidance being provided at not just the, the national level, but then filtered down through the league of municipalities, and, and then there's a lot of interpretation on top of it. So take, don't take this as, as the Bible. It's, this is, this is our interpretation as well, based on the guidance that we have received up to this point. And so I know there's direct correspondence many times that goes on between municipalities and the league of municipalities as well, and then we hear about it secondhand or thirdhand about some of the, the guidance that they are providing. So there's some fluidity here to this program. So what is it? The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, you're gonna hear me say ARPA funds on a regular basis, was signed into law on March 11th, 2021, 350 billion with a B, allocated to coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The Treasury then filter, filters down through the Treasury, they release interim financial rule on May 10th, providing some guidance for all the recipients. So the SLRF are really the recipients of the funds. U.S. Treasury released compliance or reporting guidelines in June of '21, and more guidance in a, in a reporting portal that you can go on and, and follow on August 9th, 2021. So it's fast-moving, and we will continue to see more guidance as they go through this. A lot of what I'm gonna talk about is, you know, kind of what you can do, and then also some of the reporting requirements. So there's review guidance in conjunction with federal statute, and you'll see single audit stuff being talked about in a little bit. There's some interim financial rules, and then there, there's this uniform guidance, which is a federal rule I'll get into in a little bit, and awards, award terms and conditions. So they want you to, to essentially provide compliance and reporting on a number of different facets and a number of different levels. So some general suggestions from us, Ellers is create and manage accounts separately. We don't want to see intermingled funds because there's always compliance, reporting requirements. We think it's better to really manage the accounts separately, which means don't place it in your general fund and have it kind of get lost in your general fund. Really develop a plan for use of the funds. Your roughly 3.2 million that's coming in will come in over two tranches. The first one received, the second one will be coming in within a year or so. Create a record-keeping and reporting plan. You have a great staff that I'm sure is already looking at this and already doing this, but you want to make sure that this is segregated and you have a separate record-keeping and reporting plan. Invest funds wisely. I know you'll probably be working with our firm on, on some of this as well, but segregating the funds, making sure they're invested properly, and then take a long view to make sure that these are kind of projects that ultimately will benefit the community long-term, not just short-term. So those are some general suggestions we have. So as mentioned, the U.S. Treasury kind of filters down, and they actually are the ones that are, you know, reporting back to. They're looking at a number of things. What are the funds being used for, and they are, are they being used wisely, preventing waste, fraud, and abuse? And so that's why all the compliance and all the reporting. They gotta make sure that it's being used for the purposes identified, and there's good tracker, tracking of what's being done. States and local governments maintain accounting transparency, that's a big piece of this. They want to make sure that the public is aware of the projects that are being undertaken with this as well. And I will just mention that the reporting is now becoming more streamlined. There's an online portal, I mentioned already, that helps with some of this. There's a, you have to go through a registration to get on. They extended the reporting deadline 30 days past the, the original deadline. I think that's, there's gonna be another extension we're hearing as well. And then detailed user guide is coming. And then detailed user guide is coming, they promise, soon. And that's really important because I think that user guide is going to provide a little more clarity around projects and what people are spending money on, and maybe some good examples of how funds can be used in communities. So, I talked a little bit about uniform guidance. These are all kind of federal terms. The recipients, like the city, are required to follow uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, and audit requirements for federal awards. And then remember, this is federal funds, so where there comes a lot of strings. They want to make sure you have allowable activities, allowable costs, cash management. Again, the segregation of funds, making sure that's all segregated, making sure the projects are eligible, and make sure you have proper monitoring, monitoring of the projects as well. So, there's a lot of guidance that's out there. City will be required to follow the terms and conditions of the assistance, and there are requirements identified here. There could be federal government requirements, record keeping requirements, single audit requirements, which is similar to what you've had to deal with if you received federal funds in the past from other programs. You have these single audit requirements. And then civil right, civil rights compliance issues as well. So, there's a, a host of, of compliance issues that they're going to want you to kind of check the box, if you will, maybe a little more than that, but check the box to make sure that you're meeting all the mandatory requirements. So, this is a little hard for me to read. I'm going to have to increase the font size. One second. Some people tell me glasses help this. So, non-entitled units of government, like the city of West Bend, will be, will have to identify types of project funds, again, financial data, information on contracts, grants, and sub, subawards over $50,000. There'll be an annual requirement for reporting. The, the date received first half, the tranche, the, as you've received already award to September 30th, 2021, and then 30 days after the end of the annual period thereafter. So, there'll be a submission date, October 31st of, of funding. I think that's going to be pushed out multiple times is what we are hearing, just because there's the guidance that has been coming from the federal government's been slow. And then forcing people to react shortly after that is, is unrealistic. So, we're expecting some of these dates to slide into later, into later time periods. So, as I indicated, they have identified a number of different areas for expenditures, including public health, negative economic impact, services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, infrastructure, which most people have focused a lot of their attention on the infrastructure piece because it's probably the easiest to get your arms around. Revenue replacement, where you have lost revenues due to COVID activities, and you're trying to replace those revenues. One situation probably in the city of West Bend, this type of community would maybe hotel motel tax, or during COVID, you probably had less rooms being rented out, and administrative, some administrative costs. So, those are the, the expenditure categories that they have identified at this point. And within each one of those, there is a separate guidance, and we're still waiting for more clarification on, on some other projects that we're looking at for communities. So, areas, I know I've, I've talked to some of the staff here, that you're looking at possibly some of the funding going to Riverwalk. If you look at the second and third areas, negatively, negative economic impact for like a downtown area, and services to disproportionately impacted communities, which probably would be earmarked more towards your downtown, which probably suffered more than most other areas of the city. So, that, that would be how that fits within these different required expenditure categories. They have also looked at demographic information, and there's funding that, I'm working for a few larger municipalities that are looking at how to use some funding for specific demographic populations or areas in their community. And so, you can look at qualified census tracts as by, you know, physical location to provide assistance in that area. You can certainly look at criteria that the state has provided where primary beneficiaries earn less than 60%, a median income for that community. And so, there's a number of different criteria that center around disproportionately affected communities within a community, broader community. And so, I'm not sure if that's the direction the city would ever look to, but that gets a little more complicated as far as the requirements and how you need to document, clearly document what the funding went for and how it benefited those, those communities. So, a lot of, I indicated, most of the communities that we deal with in Wisconsin, because COVID had an impact on communities, but did not have a, a dramatic financial impact on most, the budgets of most communities, they're focusing a lot of their attention on infrastructure, which is kind of where the guidance initially started, I think, when it came, the funding came out. So, they have really focused on what is required to be provided, project name, identification number, description, what is the expenditures and obligations regarding that project, status, whether or not it started or not before, dates, dates specific, which, if you go back to the first page, identifies when the funding was made available. Actual and projected, projected and actual completion date, and the location as well. So, there's going to be a lot of box to be checked off for even an infrastructure type project. So, the ones that have been focused on greatly within a lot of the dialogue with, with the league of municipalities has been public water system, sewer systems, and stormwater, with the thought that they affect a broader population within a community. On a call earlier today with a large municipality that is receiving a significant dollar amount, and they are looking to use it really towards primarily stormwater projects, which they are been, I'll say deficient in over the last couple of years, not just on new developments either. Broadband gets a little more complicated. They want you to kind of answer all the questions you see there, but broadband is another. Other guidance that we've, we've seen is, you know, for road, for a specific road project many times is not eligible, but if it's a road project where you're, you're going to be resurfacing, reconstructing a road project where water and sewer improvements were made, that is allowed. So, there is some flexibility in the program as well. I'm not going to spend a lot on broadband because I don't know much about broadband. I just hope it works well in my house. So, this is some of the guidance that is provided. But again, they're really looking, looking at as businesses, schools, libraries, where it can serve, again, a broader population and be more beneficial for more of the public. So, can you invest local funds? You get the ARPA funds in, in these big tranches, right? A million, six at a time. You can invest those funds. And the nice thing about investing those funds is, well, let me get into what you can and cannot do. Like all other public dollars that you invest, there are significant constraints on where the money can go and be invested in. And so, there's a state guidance on, on that, and similar here. Securities that are issued by federal government or other agencies, CDs, money markets, some municipal bonds and notes issued by municipalities. So, it's not a broad area where you can invest the funds. But again, very similar to the funds that are going, coming to the city, if you are investing funds, again, we want to see them segregated, permissible vehicles that are spelled out by, by the state, ensure adequate liquidity to meet the project expenditures, meaning you don't want to invest in a CD that matures in three years. You have to spend the money before that. And track all the ARPA compliant expenditures. So, similar as far as investing the dollars. One of the things that's really nice about monies that you earn on those funds, so if you sat on those funds for a period of time, on the second bullet point here, the funny, funds that you earn are not subject to the ARPA, ARPA program restrictions, meaning they could be spent elsewhere for other projects, and they don't have the same compliance requirements. So, not that you're going to earn a lot these days, unfortunately, in where you can invest money, but whatever comes in, you have a little more flexibility in what you can use those funds for. So, when you are at home on your computer and you're looking for something to keep yourself interested, and your mind humming along, you can go on these helpful links and resources that will give you all the guidance that is out there to date. But there is ongoing continual rule changes, and I think we'll see ongoing compliance mandates along the way as well. So, we try to give you some of the links in case you want to go on and read these, these items as well. So, with that, I know it's a, a quick overview. I'll just summarize it by saying, I think the, the initial project that you're looking at certainly is, in our estimation, eligible. We want to make sure that what you're looking at doing from a, from a fund stays segregated as a separate fund. I know Kerry and, and their group will do that for the city is, is on top of that. And just keep in mind that there's going to be a lot of compliance with this. You issue bonds, and it sounds like it's a lot of work, but there's not a lot of regulatory work tied to that. It's making sure you use the funds for the appropriate projects. With this, when there's federal, federal dollars attached, there's just going to be more paperwork and more compliance. So, again, from our end, we would prefer to see you invest in larger scale projects. You're not doing 50 small scale projects that you have to report on versus five larger scale projects that you can report on. Just from a reporting standpoint, it'll be beneficial for the city and for staff, not have to report on, you know, the use of funds on small, small projects around the city.
Sounds great. I'll open up the council if there's any questions for Phil. Yes, sir.
Just, you might, next time you give this, do, do the auto correct. CRF is CFR. It's Code of Federal Regulations.
Will do. Thank you. I think it autocorrected already. That, with the...
I might have missed a Phil. Is there a deadline that we need to spend the funds by?
Well, the, that's changing on a, on a regular basis. So, I would say the, I had in here, the, this initial slide, you, you really have time. There, I, it's, I believe, I should know that. I think it's three years, but you have time. It's not, there's not a rush to spend the money. They want you to do proper planning, and they want to make sure that you're getting your biggest bang for your buck as well, and make sure the projects that you're working through, even if you don't spend the dollars, there's still reporting requirements, as I've laid out here, that have to be done on a regular basis. And so, my recollection is three. I'm looking back at Kerry. She's saying yes. I believe her, so.
Thanks Kerry for answering that question.
You have time. It's not like you have to get it out the door quickly and spent by a certain timeframe, like in, like in three months or six months.
And then my only other question, and maybe it's a dumb question, but it seems to me that the, the revenue replacement, wouldn't that be the easiest to claim, right? To claim the funds has lost revenue, and then they'll just in turn become just funds that you can just use for...
Yeah, there's a revenue replacement calculator you have to go through as a city and identify what the true amount of revenue loss was due to COVID. And in your case, like most Wisconsin municipalities, you've, whatever COVID expenses, you were probably reimbursed by the state for most of those already. The ones that sometimes you aren't, are like, again, I mentioned hotel motel tax, some of those kind of things. So, I don't think there's a lot there. I'm not sure if staff has done that revenue replacement calculator to determine if there is or not, but I think it'd be, it'd be relatively small in the city.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. All right. And we'll move to public hearing, number three, a public hearing regarding levying special assessments for the downtown West Bend Business Improvement District, and this will go along with number four, which is a resolution levying special assessments for the 2022 Downtown West Bend Business Improvement District as well. Do we have any report on this first before we open up? Maybe? Hey, Jess.
Hi, Jess Wilds. I don't necessarily have a report, but I am here if you have any questions or comments on the plan.
Sounds great. Well, we'll open up the public hearing first. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak on the item, feel free to come on up.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, send somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll move on to number four. If there's any questions, otherwise we'll look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Model and Allen. If there's no questions, all those in favor of the resolutions, are there saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to consent agenda, and I'm going to take out items number five and seven. So, first, we're going to consent six, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. If we can have a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Model, all those in favor of the consent agenda, send somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then Alderman Butchlick, if you can take number five for me?
Original Class A combination liquor license for Quick Trip, Quick Trip number 1058, 1280 East Paradise Drive.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. And then we'll take up number seven, which is a grant privilege request for 256 Willow Lane. The recommendation was for approval with a two-foot setback.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Butchlick and Allen. Is there any further comments, questions, anybody changing their mind? Then all those in favor, send somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll assume those are the same as the committee. Wonderful. And with that, we'll move on to agenda items for consideration, number 13, a resolution awarding the sale of now 2,835,000 taxable general obligation community development bond, Series 2021B. I'm assuming Phil doesn't have anything else to say on this? Nope. Shaking his head, so we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Model. All those in favor, send somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful, and that passes. And then number 14, review the 2022 budget. We've had some time since the Finance Committee to review, and our city administrator, Jay Chambault, is here for any comments. Take it away.
I don't really have a presentation for you either this evening. If there are questions or concerns that have come up since the last time we had a chance to chat, a week ago, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them. Thanks, Phil. I can share with you that as of now, and I talked a little bit about how the levy limit and expenditure restraint play sometimes against each other with their formulas and our prospective budget. We did go to public notice with a 790 city tax rate, so 793 was the rate from last year, but in order to qualify for expenditure restraint, again, we've been talking about this the last several years, we did not think that we would be able to qualify for budget year 2023. That's what this budget and this rate, this levy amount sets us up for is 2023 expenditure restraint program funds. Because we were able to qualify one more year, we'll be recommending lowering the rate from 793 to 790 for, as of now, for the 2022 budget. There are still those numbers that we talked about a week ago that were coming in, supposed to be in last Friday. They, they're not. They're still not here as of today. So, the, once those numbers come in from the state, then the other taxing entities have an opportunity to, to set their tit apportionment, and that could affect that number a little bit. So, that rate is still a tiny bit fluid, but we did have to go to publication, and we went with it at the 790 number. we went with it at the 790 number, and we'll keep you posted.
Sounds great. Any questions for Jay? Do you need any action tonight, Jay?
No, this is update, ask questions. And if you have questions, if something comes up in between, I know there's a couple of things that came up on Monday that I'm still tracking down for, for some, Alderman, I'll, I'll say my words, some, some minor parts or pieces of the budget that were being discussed, but we'll get that information to you as well.
Sounds great. Thanks so much for the update.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to reports. Number 15, a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the library board meeting.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on September 21st at the library. We approved the agenda and commenced with the business of the board. The financial report was given. We actually earned some interest on our accounts and approved the monthly expenditures. I tried to draft someone at the library to give a public comment, but had no luck. So we moved on to the library director's report. Steve gave us a six-month recap on expenditures and revenues. At this point in the year, we are underspending by about $65,000, due in part to staff departures and rollover funds from last year. There have been many changes implemented this year. Hiring of staff is ongoing, but we are essentially fully staffed minus a couple of recent departures. The Friends at a Library Group has been organized with the establishing of leadership positions being the next goal. The 501(c)(3) paperwork has been filed, and the forming of a foundation is the goal for next year. The self-check machines are up and running, but with any new technology, there are hardware and software issues to work through. We were briefed on the Adalvice software that the library is using to track usage of and maintenance of the library's collection of material. Deb, the board president, reported that a meeting is upcoming concerning the formation of a committee to review library policies. She also reminded us that it's that time of year that we need to provide feedback for the library director's evaluation. We conducted the overview of the 2022 budget and was briefed on the Washington County agreement for their part in library funding. The county payments were agreed to be made twice a year in February and July, all based on the previous year's circulation numbers. It was advised that we may need a special session to approve the budget and the county as an agreement. The next meeting of the library board is scheduled for tomorrow, October 19th.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Alderman Berquist? If you could just, well, if you could just pass along to Steve how excited I am that a Friends group is established. I know that was a goal like 10 years ago. So to see that, you know, come to fruition is pretty awesome. Good stuff. All right. Number 16, a report by, I believe, Alderman Muddel regarding the planning commission meeting.
Sure, yeah. October 5th was, was the last planning commission meeting, and Jed, jump in if I'm forgetting anything here, but we had a bit of a spicy meeting. As, as many of you know, I've been working along with Jay and Jess and some of the folks in Barton on establishing a Barton bid that came to the planning commission meeting on the 5th, and it failed. We did have a bunch of folks come up from the, from the business community and express their concerns, which I, which I obviously completely respect as a democratic process. It was kind of, kind of neat to watch that all go down. But of course, I would have liked to, liked, liked to have had a different outcome, but I do want to thank Jess and Jay and Ian and Mark and whomever else was involved in helping us establish that. And there was really a lot of time and energy that went into it, and again, it was a little bit of a disappointment. But on the upside, we did learn a lot about maybe how to do that next time. You know, there wasn't really anybody involved that had been involved in that process before. So, you know, with the benefit of hindsight, there's obviously a few things that we would do very, very much differently. We've got that list, and hopefully we can go at it in another couple of years and maybe start with a little bit of a smaller bid area, you know, or, and along with a number of other things, obviously. But, and so we did get a, a bunch of new, this is just kind of incidentally, but we did get a couple of new, actually a number of new members in the HBBA and a couple of actually, well, one for sure, and I think this Wednesday we're going to get another officer involved. So a lot more involvement with the HBBA. And that was part of the problem is that, you know, we were just kind of diminishing in as far as active members goes, but our membership is way up. So anyways, that's, that's aside from the planning commission. The other thing that we talked about was the establishment of an, potential establishment of an indoor gun range. At the meeting, we decided, we discussed the, the potential of amending the zoning code for indoor shooting range, and we decided not to consider amendment for outdoor for, I don't know, a number of reasons. Do you want to elaborate on any of that, Jed?
The commission, I think, we're at two meetings now, both times consistently indicated no interest in having an outdoor range within the city. It was, Mark had done a lot of research and had difficulty even locating outdoor ranges in cities of our density. So the indoor range was not a problem. The outdoor range was just a nonstarter.
Yeah, yeah. So the next, the next planning commission meeting, we will be discussing that and potentially changing the zoning, so. And that's about it?
Sounds great. Thank you both. And then 17, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to have a report as long as Brent, but that's not going to happen. The entire bid meeting, if I gave it verbatim, takes less than his, his report, which is a summary, so. We met on October 5th, right here at City Hall, Council Chambers, 8:15 a.m. We went over the financial report, no surprises. Jess does a great job of keeping on top of that. We worked on a business owners survey. We've previously finished, just completed a survey of the property owners, but felt that it was important to get the impact, you know, what does the business owner that's effectively paying those fees indirectly in terms of their rent and so on, and to get a feel for what they, what their expectations of the bid are. That should be going out in mid-October, the last I heard. We made one minor tweak on it. It looks great. We approved the Christmas decoration estimate, so we'll be going ahead with that. I would like everybody to remember, save the date for the tree lighting ceremony, which is Thursday, November 4th at 6:30 p.m. in Old Settlers Park. Dressed warm, last year it was really, really cold. We also talked, we talked about interest in a facade grant committee to recommend grants to people to upgrade their facades. And then the roofline lights are finally available for people to, to view. They are located on the north, eight, eight or 10 feet of the Husar Building. This is a new technology. It's an LED-based lighting, so you can get a feel for what the lights are. And that was our meeting. And you can watch it online, courtesy of the communications and community TV groups.
Yes, you can. Any questions for Alderman Allen? Then seeing none, I'll go to number 18. Entertained a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute, Section 19.85, Para 1(c), considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employer for which a governing governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise a responsibility thereof which is concerning collective bargaining updates. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion seconded. Steph, if we could have a roll call.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaronz?
Aye.
Alderman Muddel?
Aye.
You are in closed session.
Thank you. It will be adjourning from closed session, so open up if there's any comments for the go of the order. Eddie? Hearing them. Have a great night, and we are in closed.